8th, 2019, regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order with all members present. We're going to ask Kathy Wagner of Outreach Children's Ministry to do the invocation tonight, and we're going to ask the Pledge of Allegiance to be performed by Mr. Lowe. He stand.
Good evening. The Lord says that He is giving us hope. So we have a city we need to pray for and people we need that are hurting. And so as we go to this meeting tonight, let's be with all the council people that are up here that are making decisions for us. Lord, we just thank you for this evening that we can help guide this city to a better place. We thank you, Lord, that you do heal us from our hurts and that you do love us. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here. We have no presentations today. We're going to proceed with the oral communications. Mr. City Clerk? Can you please tell us what the guidelines are for oral communications, please? Thank you.
During oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the City Council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies, as a body, shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer your remarks to the City Manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Kathy Wagner?
Good evening, everyone. I'm glad to be here. My ministry, Outreach Children's Ministry, has been, is celebrating 10 years of teaching children about Jesus Christ, and I've been doing it in the wonderful city of Hawthorne, the Wiseburn School District. So on behalf of the ministry, we would like to personally invite you to come to our event on Sunday, the 13th, which is this coming Sunday. Sorry for the late notice. I thought I'd emailed everyone, but you know, technology. So it's better to do face-to-face. So yes, you would be our guests. I do have some information for you. We're going to tell you how wonderful God is and what He's been doing in the city of Wiseburn and prayerfully what people are learning about Jesus and going throughout and telling it to their friends so others may know. So I have these lovely flyers for you tonight if you would pass them out, and my business card. And I like to share the hope of Jesus. I don't always do the best job, but He does.
We appreciate what you do for our community. Thank you so much. Juanita Douse, Senior Citizens Commissioner?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Juanita Douse, and I'm here to tell you about our resource fair that the senior citizen commissioners are having on Thursday, this Thursday, at the Memorial Center from 10:00 to 1:00. And everyone is invited. We're looking forward to seeing you all's face, okay? So it's 10 o'clock at Hawthorne Memorial Center from 10:00 to 1:00. And I'm looking forward to see you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Pat Donaldson, Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce?
Good evening, Mayors. Mayor Pro Tem, City Council. Patricia Donaldson, Presidency of the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. I would like to make an announcement that we're going to have a costume mixer on October 24th at the Marriott across the street. And there will be tons of food, so come hungry and dress up. And there will be door prizes and money prizes and all kinds of gifts. So I hope that all of you can make it. It's going to be from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, October 24th. Our golf tournament was a great success, and I just want to thank everyone that did attend. And we gave out footballs from the Rams, the Chargers, and tickets to the Dodgers, Dodger games. So that takes care of that. Then November 26th at 1:00 PM, we'll be giving out turkeys at Hawthorne Auto Square at 1:00 PM, and that's for families that are low-income or homeless families. We'll be giving out 300 turkeys and 300 bags of groceries. So anyone that needs that can come on that day. And then December 20th, we'll be having our Christmas party. We'll be giving out 500 turkeys, 500 bags of groceries, and thousands of toys, and that's going to be at 2:00 PM at the Memorial Center. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wishing to address the City Council? Okay, we have two people. Okay. All right, we have two people. Hi.
Council. My name is Darlene Love. I live at Wilton Place on 116th. Of course, these kids are not Hawthorne kids, but you're going to have to send someone up there to stripe that street. It's counting, but in the middle across this is Hawthorne. And I see that striping is coming up. We don't have a lot of kids that are going to Summer Round, but those nuts that come through there every morning doesn't hardly recognize stop signs. So maybe they see that, you know, during the summer, it has a chance to have broken up. And I look at it every day and them coming through, so I really don't want them to hit a kid. So send whoever comes and put a little paint, if you can afford it, on the street. Thank you.
We'll ask the City Manager to take a look at what we can do as a city.
Oh, he will. He's a good man.
Yeah. He'll go himself at night. In the middle of the night, when the county, when the city of LA can't catch him or what?
Yeah, that's LA County. That is LA County.
But I think she was talking about is the street that have Summer Round School. The street, but Ms. Love, was the Summer Round Schools, the street, right? The crosswalk that is 116 and Wilton?
But that's totally within Hawthorne, so.
Yeah, that's Hawthorne.
That's holy.
It's not, it's not the Wilton.
Oh, it's on 116.
Yeah, it's 116.
Yes. Thank you, ma'am. I don't need, all right, you're the man. All right, ma'am?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Council, Mayor Pro Tem, City officials. Lethal Williams, a proud parent here in the city of Hawthorne. I would just like to say thank you for having me this evening, and it's a glad thing to see and a marvelous thing to see. The corridor of Imperial and Crenshaw, along there between Prairie and Crenshaw, totally paved. The citizens are so happy to see that. Well done. Well done. It has, I'm sorry. It was something that has been a question of you got Inglewood on one side, you got Hawthorne on the other. Glad there was meetings of the minds. That was very good. And it's a good thing that a question have come up for this city to have an economic advisor. It's well overdue. It's well overdue to help keep pushing our city forward. And that is something we want to do. We don't want to keep backpedaling for us, these business owners that consider theyself quote-unquote "rich", as they think they are, and not doing anything with these dwellings that have been here for so many years. And speaking of backpedaling, I would like to encourage our City Council to please table this item 2191. We backpedaling. I mean, you've got Sacramento asking us to open up a dispensary so we could get funds. We have dispensaries all around us. I mean, no smoking and city-owned facilities. Okay, if you have company coming, that uncle and auntie that loves to smoke, coming from Cuba, coming from London, tell them, hey, I live on the city's property. You can't stand outside the building no more and smoke or anything like that. I mean, it's just backpedaling. It's got our city backpedaling. I'm asking you to table this, take this, and utilize this to think about others. Because as you have been elected, things are not about you. Yes, this is our city, but so many cities around us. I mean, yes, you don't have places smelling like a whole pack of RJ rental factory. I mean, and then you do have medical marijuana patients, that person that has a disorder. Let's say, are you thinking of them? Or are you just thinking of yourself? And have smoking and city facilities been abused or something like that? That anorexic person that's on medical marijuana, you got to get up, go out your house and do what you got to do to. It's medication now. It's medication. Please, take a look at this, table it, and bring it back to think about others. It's not just about you. Thank you for my time.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, let's give a round of applause to our wonderful City Manager, who's been taking care of Imperial Highway with that stripe here.
That wasn't, I am sorry, I cannot.
Thank you. Okay, next item, next item.
No, no, it wasn't me.
Mr. City Manager, your consent calendar, please.
Mr. Mayor, can I take the opportunity and introduce our Human Resources Director, Mrs. Christine Tomikawa? She's been, she's been a Human Resources Manager in Manhattan Beach and also a contract director at City of Rancho Palace where this, Mrs. Tomikawa, could you stand up? Yeah, we welcome her to our city. I missed to introduce her sooner, but she's now our full-time director.
Yeah, we've heard about her, and we're really happy to have her on board. Welcome. Welcome to the city of Hawthorne. So, Mr. City Manager, can you begin your consent calendar, please? No, City Clerk, I am so sorry. City Clerk? I think I jumped to the one that Ms. Williams, Ms. Lethal Williams was talking about.
I was going to say, what?
I don't know, man. I just, I just wanted to address her concern almost immediately, but okay.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I have six items on my consent calendar for your approval. Item five, approval of City Council minutes for the regular meeting of August 27th, 2019. Item six, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item seven, City Treasurer requests approval of the warrants. Item eight, Resolution Number 8063, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, adopting an amended Conflict of Interest Code containing revised designated positions and disclosure categories and repealing all previously adopted Conflict of Interest Codes. Item nine, Resolution Number 8130, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, proclaiming the month of October 2019 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Hawthorne, California. Item 10, Resolution Number 8141, a resolution of the City, the Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, opting into the Los Angeles Consolidated Fire Protection District's ballot measure to provide increased funding for fire protection and emergency medical services for adoption.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and Council Members voting yes.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. The ordinance, please. Can you read that, please?
Yes. Number 2191, first reading. In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, amending section 8.48010, Regulation of Smoking in City-Owned Facilities Definitions to the Hawthorne Municipal Code relating to the Regulations of Smoking in City-Owned Facilities for introduction.
I move to introduce, I move to introduce Mr. City Attorney. Does this have enough teeth that if people who are in violation of smoking in one of our city-owned apartments, buildings, that they could be kicked out? Because I think if they're going to be violating this, they're, you know, we're doing them a favor by allowing them to stay in our city-owned buildings. Does this have enough teeth to be able to remove them?
We're not looking at it for an eviction reason. We're just looking at it as a prohibition and maybe a citation.
Okay. Can you take a look at the other and give us a, a pink paper on that one? All right, thank you. Let's move on to the next one.
Item, yeah, item number 13 has been pulled, just in FYI.
Mr. City Manager, your consent calendar, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have items 15 through 18 for your approval.
I'd like to pull number 17 for discussion.
Yes. I move all items except 17.
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Discussion on item number 17, Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, and, and this is just by way of saying, I want to thank the City Manager for procuring through grants the monies to upgrade the Prairie Avenue signals and make other improvements which will improve safety for the pedestrians and make traffic flow more efficiently and smoothly. As always, the City Manager aggressively obtained $673 in grant monies to build this project, beautifying our city and making it safer without spending general funds. Thank you to you and your Public Works team.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem. All the credit goes to Public Works. As you know, I have nothing to do with Public Works anymore, so all the, all the credit goes to Public Works.
Thank you to you and, thank you.
Smoking like a true. All right, I don't know what's going on here, but okay, let's go. Do you want to make a motion on 17?
I move 17.
I second that. Please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Mr. City Attorney, your consent calendar, please, sir.
Yes, I have two items, item number 20 and 21.
I move.
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Okay, folks, that was a really short meeting, but we do have a closed session. I'm going to go ahead and just be, my God, that is really short. I'm going to ask our City Treasurer to please give us your, your last-minute reports or your end-of-the-meeting report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to thank the community for coming out, participating in the process. Also notice that we have a new target coming to the city of Hawthorne on a.
That's Longdale.
That's not, well.
I don't know what's going on. We don't want to talk about that.
Is that in Longdale?
Yeah, that's Longdale.
Hmm, it's interesting. Across the street is Hawthorne, though. Yeah, yeah. So we got some new businesses coming to the community, which is exciting. And I think as some new businesses come encourages other new businesses to come. So I'm looking forward to Hawthorne to benefit from.
Way to fix that.
First, you know, increase commerce. All right, and that's it.
Yes, we do want to congratulate our neighbors on their little target that they have sprouting up over there. We want to congratulate them. All right. Now, we wish them success. You know, it's going to be good.
Well, we have the Earth Cafe grand open on October 27th, so.
No, thank you, Mr. City Treasurer. Mr. City Clerk, Jimenez?
Yes. So first of all, I want to say it is okay for us to have short meetings. I'm advocating for our people back there so they can go home. So thank you to everyone who's here tonight and watching at home. Just have a few updates. So first of all, thank you to those who showed up to the mock election. We had a great turnout on the 20th and 29th. So yeah, the City Clerk's office keeps growing with key additions through our internship opportunities. We're at a team of six, which includes three interns. Last month, our intern Walter Perez went back to UCI, so we lost him for a good reason. So now, in addition to our current team, we have added Dulce Bautista, who's going to be covering Hawthorne news stories for the Herald Press, and Sarah Carreras, who's going to be our social media intern. So if you have any suggestions on stories for the newspaper or for our social media, please contact me at p jimenez@cityofhawthorne.org. Our office is hosting a City Clerk's meeting on October 21st at 12:00 PM. We already have received confirmations from City Clerks from Torrance, Redondo Beach, Gardena, Inglewood, and Manhattan Beach. So it's going to just be a great way for us to learn about best practices across our area. If, as a reminder, if not on Nextdoor, on the Nextdoor application, please consider joining because you're missing out on a lot of useful information and access to resources. Just this week, we provided information on the community meeting on October 19th, the Fun Run on October 26th, the paper shredding and electronic waste collection event on October 26th as well, the Halloween spectacular on the 30th. So knowledge is power, so join Nextdoor. And finally, thank you for being here again, and happy Latinx Heritage Month, and go Dodgers.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Mike Tayada, let's go this way.
Okay, yeah, go Dodgers. I want to, you know, some of you know that I work with combat wounded vets and their families, and I want to thank the Hawthorne Police Department, Chief Ishi, Jim Royer, Captain Royer, for organizing barbecue for us Saturday, this last Saturday. We, we had about 45, we had about 15 of our combat wounded vets and their families turned into about 45 people. We had a bouncer for the kids. It was a beautiful afternoon. We spent a lot of time trying to come up with ways to bring, create fellowship and get these vets together. It's a big, it's, it's good medicine for them. And so anytime that we have an opportunity to do that, and it was a special opportunity because you don't get to see the inside of a police station usually under good circumstances, you know, and we were invited, you know? And so it was good. It was a lot of fun. The cops were great. And then we had access to the SWAT team, and you got kids jumping all over them SWAT trucks and, you know, taking pictures and seeing all the toys, and it was a great, great afternoon. So I want to thank the Police Department and Chief and Captain Royer. Go Dodgers. That's, okay, so send the good vibes. Okay, yeah, that's it.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilmember Hadar Awad?
Thank you, Mary Vargas. I just want to thank the audience for coming out and thank the members at home for watching and tuning in. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Alex Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, again, thank you. This is a short meeting, so I'll be short. Actually, I want to thank, you know, Mr. Neil Gaffin for the Disaster Service Workshop Training that we did on, on September 25th. Yeah, September 25th, he did workshop that all the staff and us were mandatory to attend, so he did a fantastic job. So thank you for that. I also, with Ms. Valentine, we attend the South Bay COG and the SCAC meeting about arena numbers. So we expressed our discontent with those numbers, so we were very loud. And Hawthorne, I believe, was the only city that have sent letters to oppose those numbers. But the South Bay COG also sent a letter to oppose that, and they're going to meet on Monday to revise those numbers. So we'll see what is going to come up on, from Monday. On September 27th, I also attend a meeting that was the Governor Newsom Homeless Advisory Board that was chaired by the, our supervisor, Mark Legley Thomas, and the Sacramento Mayor. So they brought all these experts to talk about what we, the state's going to do about the homeless issue. So it was a lot of, the one idea, so we gave them ideas and some project to take to the governor so maybe he can come up with some ideas for the next fiscal year of 2021. The St. Joseph Fiesta was pretty good. I know you're going to talk about it. So also on Sunday, the 29th, myself and Councilman Hadar Awad, we went to the Stream Makeover Project that they gave the key to the family, the Fahita family, after they, you know, did a wonderful job with that, with that house on Fountain Hill. Then on Wednesday, the October 2nd, Councilman Hadar and I, we went back to the Fahitas' house and present them a proclamation with, with the key to the city. Because that family, you know, for 15 years have housed, you know, homeless youths and families in their house. It was only a two-bedroom house, a little house. They call it the Pink House. And they, you know, belongs to this Tonga Church, and they actually were housing kids that didn't have no place to be called home. So that's why we gave them the proclamation, the key to the city because, and that is why they have, you know, right now, a beautiful home with three bedrooms and stuff like that, thanks to the Stream Makeover that you will see on HGTV on 2020, on February 2020, okay? On the, also Ms. Valentine and I attend the grand reopen of the West Base Municipal Water District, new facility in El Segundo. And it was a beautiful facility and have a lot of rooms there for education seminars, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So it was good to see that. Then I attend the Holly Park Home Moon Association meeting, the Kiwanis, 80 years installation. So the Kiwanis of Hawthorne has been here for 88 years, so it's fantastic. And on Monday, yesterday, I attended North Hawthorne Neighborhood Association. So coming up, the barbecue dinner on October 17th at 5:00 PM at the Memorial Center. So be there, 5 o'clock, and $5 for barbecue chicken and $2.50 for the children's under 12. And on Friday, the October 25th at 6:00 PM at the Hawthorne Mus Lodge, we're going to celebrate Halloween and 55 years of the Hawthorne Mus Lodge. So be there because, you know, the Hawthorne Mus Lodge, you know, they raise money for children, orphaned childrens and seniors. So it's not just a social quarter or hall, but we raise money for children and seniors. So we're celebrating 55 years in, in the business of nonprofits. And then Saturday, like Mr. Dr. Paul Jimenez mentioned, the annual Hawthorne Run. Run, we call it the Hawthorne Fun Run and Health Fair and Harvest, Healthy Habits at the Hawthorne High School. The registration begin at 8:00, the run starts at 9:00, and the health fair ends at noon time. So we have a lot of door prizes, a lot of good things giveaway. And I want to get a shout-out, and this was about time. Governor Newsom, this afternoon, signed the bill that is going to have some rent stabilization, almost like a rent control type for entire state of California. So starting next year, the landlord cannot raise your rent no more than 5% plus the cost of living. So basically, your rent should not be increased no more than 5% to 10% for at least until 2030. So 10 years of the, of this program that is going to be across California, that the landlords cannot raise your rent no, between. that are gonna be across California, that the landlords cannot raise your rent no be- between five and ten percent. And also, they put some language there that will prevent some landlords to evict you for no reason. So, so it is, it was due, because, you know, rent has been going up tremendously. You know, some people come complain to us that their rent went up four hundred dollars a month, and even yesterday, at the North Hawthorne meeting, they were complaining about their rents went up like thirty percent, forty percent in, in two months, so it's good that bill was passed. And at the other meeting that I attend, I forgot to mention, is the Calif- is the Clean Power Alliance. And the Clean Power Alliance, uh, look for next year, they're gonna give rebates and incentives. You know, those of you that did have the Clean Power Alliance, like Hawthorne, we have about twenty-five thousand residents and four thousand, uh, commercial. So they're gonna give some rebate next year and incentives, like, for example, for incentives for you to have like an electric charge for your, you know, electric cars, and, and some other incentives coming up from next year. So keep looking for that, and good night, and I'll see all of you next, the seventeen at the barbecue dinner, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Valentine?
Uh, yes, thank you, I only have one thing to, uh, to emphasize, and that is that Earth Cafe is finally coming to Hawthorne, this is a big deal. Um, we're, we're going to have, not that we don't already have great restaurants, but this is going to be a really, a real premier restaurant that is coming to Hawthorne. It will be opening on October twenty-seventh, Sunday, at eleven A M., and, um, he's, he's going to have, uh, he's going to have a V I P, um, ceremony first and then a reception. So as many people as possible, he'd like to have, he'd like to make it, uh, a real celebration, the opening, and it's already beautiful over there, if you've been there, at a hundred and forty-seventh Street, um, near Inglewood. And, um, it's going to be, uh, it's, it's, it's already open, but it's a soft, it's a soft opening, so it's not open all day. So right now, you can actually go over there and have, but you have to kind of figure out what time to go. I would say around lunchtime, it's probably open, but it's not open all day, but it will be open officially on the twenty-seventh, Sunday, so be sure to come and celebrate the opening of our big restaurant in Hawthorne. That's all I have, um. It's on a hundred and forty-seventh Street, off Inglewood Avenue, to the west of Inglewood Avenue.
Uh, you know where the Best Buy is, is between, is in that street, is that street right there where used to, Gold Gym used to be, now it's L A Fitness?
Right across the street.
On one forty-seven, it's right across the street.
Thank you, that's all I have, have a good week.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, thank you very much. Uh, thank you all for being here, it's a short, uh, short meeting today, and that's just a testament that, you know, the city council just here to take care of business. We're not just here to, just want to hear ourselves speak and just do diatribes and everything, we just want to get things done and, uh, be as efficient as possible. So congratulations to all of us and staff and the city manager, let's give it up for Arnie again, one more time. Because, I mean, seriously, you have everybody over there like, on, on, on a good program, so thank you. Um, so the mock election, I really enjoyed it.
Oh, yeah?
You know what, um, I'll, I'll admit, I'll, thank you so much, uh, Mister City Clerk, for organizing with, uh, you organizing and reaching out and building relationships with the L A County Register. Uh, we wouldn't be like a testing ground for this and for other different things that they want to, uh, let the community know, so thank you for that. But I'll admit, when I went in there, there was a little bit of problems, they couldn't scan my, 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 my information, and they couldn't print out the ballot, and there's, so, you know, it was good, because, you know, that's, that's where they want to find this stuff out.
I was there with you.
Yeah, but they, they couldn't print mine out, but for you-
Mine went, mine went like, no problem.
I don't know what sabotage you did over there on me or something, no, but, so that's a good, it's a good opportunity for them to find out what the problems were, like the, um, problems with the equipment, maybe the testing, uh, the training, maybe, maybe the individual was helping me wasn't fully trained, did it not? So it's a lot of things that they could find out, and as opposed to like on Election Day when, you know, you know, that's really crucial that there's no mistakes, so it's good that they were able to do it in the city of Hawthorne. The book sale, we had the Hawthorne, uh, you know, Hawthorne, uh, book sale here at the Hawthorne Library with the Friends of the Library group who hosted that, so I was there. Um, I bought, I didn't buy any, for any books this time, I bought some vinyl records that they had, like on Mozart, so like his greatest hits, you know, right there. Yeah, Mozart's Greatest Hits, yeah, well, basically, it was a time, there was a series maybe in the seventies or sixties, which was a Time Life, uh, series on great composers, does anybody remember that? And so they had like Kukowski, they had Mozart, they had Bach, Brahms. But I was gonna take the Kukowski one, but it was like, it was missing two out of the four records, I said, now this is incomplete, so I took the Mozart one. So, uh, congratulations to the, uh, society, uh, the Library Society. St. Joseph's Fiesta, I did attend as well, and my colleagues attended separately at different moments. So it was a great event, there was tons of people, there were no incidents, we have our police that was there supporting, and we had like a couple of secret pieces of equipment that helped prevent anything from getting out of hand, so thank you to our Police Department, thank you to the St. Joseph's Parish for inviting the community and hosting a great event. Um, that's pretty much all I have, myself, uh, make sure you guys attend all the different, uh, events that we're having. Uh, Councilmember Monteros coordinated, uh, his, uh, his barbecue dinner, make sure you go to that, make sure you go to all the other things that are out, uh, out, so, you know, I think right now, what our effort is, and we talked about it last time, and I've talked to my colleagues, the City Attorney, everybody here has ideas for events, things that'll bring you out, that'll be services for you as a community. We also have things that are just plain fun, that we just want you guys to come out and have fun. And, uh, I think it's just we turned a different, we turned a, uh, a different corner in the, you know, on the road, and we're going off into like a nice staple and fun time for the city of Hawthorne as well. Economically sound, but also fun for its residents, so I really appreciate the efforts of all my colleagues to make that happen. Uh, we have a closed session, um, does anybody wish to speak on this closed session? After this, when we're gonna come back?
I have the address for Earth Cafe.
Yeah, go ahead, give us the address for the Earth Cafe.
Four nine four zero, West one forty-seventh Street, Hawthorne, California. So again, that's four nine four zero, West one forty-seventh Street in Hawthorne, and yeah, it's-
Or, or in other words, go south on Inglewood, and when you get to one forty-seventh, turn make a right. Yeah, I mean, well, you know, and you got the address, I mean, if, if you go too far, you missed it.
But avoiding Inglewood.
If you end up in Home Depot, you went too far.
Yeah. Uh, okay, so, anybody wishing to speak on the closed session? After we come out of here, we're just gonna vote, so anybody in the audience can, should probably just head home, because we're not gonna do anything fancy it when we come back out, okay? Uh, is anybody wishing to speak on this closed session item? If not, I'll declare oral communications closed, so ordered. I will now recess the city council meeting to conduct a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda, we're in recess. It's called to order, we have met in a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda, Mister City Attorney?
Uh, yes, the closed session had to deal with real property negotiations with Arnie Shadbear, the real property negotiator. We were negotiating the potential modification of the terms and amount of the financial security provided to the city for the grant and use of the easement. In closed session, we agreed to reduce the letter of credit commensurate with the reduction in the length of the tunnel, which is about sixty percent, so the letter of credit is in fact being reduced from two point five million, uh, to one point five million, uh, pursuant to Section seven B I. of the Subsurface Easement Agreement, which was adopted by the city council in August of twenty sixteen.
Okay, do we need to vote on this?
No.
Okay, is there anything further from council members or staff? If not, this meeting is adjourned.